Mike, I would like to start our March twenty second meeting at seven eleven. If we could please surprise with the pleasure of these. At this point, do we have any announcements? We did the art room.
Yeah.
Last week.
Yeah.
Let's move to the approval of agenda. We already did make a couple last minute adjustments. Just we added on to the hundred and eighty day proposal. And also just the motion then to speak about. So we did do that over hours of events, just heads up on the board members. So we can move to approval of this for the March eighth. I'll entertain the motion to approve March eighth.
So second.
Any discussion? And we don't have any board members in mind, right?
No.
Okay, all in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't believe that was. Did you?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain.
I was saying.
Also, I wasn't there, so.
Okay, so although we went to abstain.
Abstain.
So we have Christine Griffin and Jacob. We'll have to do. For all two. Okay. At this time, I would like to do the public participation. We will have two minutes. And because they state your name and address from the record. And Dr. Willoughby will provide a two minute timer online. And if you could raise your hand, that would be greatly appreciated on the. Okay, seeing.
Thank you, that's. Best question.
Well, yes, because his, if you see the host, the mic is on.
Okay.
Yes. So at this time, if there's any further public participation, please raise your hand. If not, I will close that out. Now, let's move on to the correspondence report.
Okay, just to note, the correspondence report covers both the March eighth and the March twenty second meetings. We had an email asking that Board of Education to look into staffing issues at Talon Middle School. Author discusses situation where the district has had to rely on a long term substitute to fill a science teaching position. And the author also discusses a staffing change for a Talon Middle School guidance council position. We had an email in support of an LGBT policy that included personal testimony of a child's experience at Talon Public Schools. We even had another email providing personal testimony of a transgender child's experience on public schools. We had an email from a student concerning a recent change to the Talon Middle School bathroom hall pass policy. We had an email in support of a five point nine seven percent board budget increase. And an email advocating for a budget that supports our schools and asks town leaders to do a careful analysis of the impact of their budget proposal.
Okay. Uh, thank you. At this time, we can open up the things of information for any board members if you would like to speak at this time. If you raise your hand. I just, Dr. Will, I have a question about the bathroom pass. Did we find any information about that?
I didn't find out anything yet on that.
That's just concerning too. Yeah, so that was one pass for Austin.
Is it connected to the slap boxing? Is it connected to the slap boxing? I think that's what the students thought. There was an email that came out from Mrs. Grandy. Sorry, my. Um, there was an email that came out from Mrs. Grandy, just talking about, you know, one of them, you, one of those trends called slap boxing that was happening in the bathroom with students. Um, and to just have a conversation with your children about it. And my, you know, my student was aware of it and said that, I think. Teachers were trying to limit how many children were out in the hallways and in the bathrooms because this was happening, so. I don't know if that's fact. I just, I connected it to that.
Right, I'm aware of, and I see all of the discipline things come across my desk from the entire district. And I did see some about slap boxing, but I didn't know if there was a connection between slap boxing and the taxes. But there's some, there might be, there might run an access for a short, short span of time until I get something resolved. But still, I, I don't, you know, I, I don't think any child's been, you prevent it from going to the bathroom, they needed it, that type of thing. That's not what that team does.
Thank you.
Um, yes, because we got one about the PJs and then.
Right. Yeah.
Slap boxing apparently is.
Boxing only.
It's slap.
Yeah.
It's literally slap.
It's literally slap. I'm like, is this a TikTok? Like, I get.
Probably, it probably comes from TikTok.
They'll. It's our dinner night the other night.
Okay, so enough with the slap boxing. Let's move on to the student representatives.
Do you want to go first?
No. Oh, today for the juniors, it was SAT day, so upstairs all blocked off. If you had, if your freshman had an upstairs locker, you could only go in the beginning of the day. And then everyone else was at downstairs until fourth block, which said everyone was allowed back upstairs. Classes removed. And it went smoothly. Did you hear that?
I think so. Not a long distance.
Um, I do know that yesterday, though, juniors had an advisory with their advisory teachers to help go over, like, to prep for SATs. And I know it didn't go smoothly under the law of computer malfunctions, but I think they worked it out because I think SATs are.
At least from what I've heard.
Yeah.
They have. So, um, the scene, the upcoming seniors, uh, week and two ago, picked out their classes and are getting them confirmed now. The upcoming juniors, AKA us, picked out classes about a week ago and are starting to have meetings with their counselors, going over them and discussing them. And upcoming sophomores are obviously having them right now, great like that. So classes should be all pitched in the upcoming weeks and then there'll be some discussion with the councilors to confirm.
It is concerning though, because the announcements, they did say thirty five percent of our class.
Yeah.
Has not put their classes and the deadline was a week ago, so. Make sure you pick your classes.
Yep.
Please.
Yeah.
And then, on, on another note, um, spring sports started, um, the locker room hectic. We've got girls and boys lacrosse, girls and boys softball and baseball, track, girls and boys, and tennis, girls and boys. No, I think that's it. And it's a full swing. It's very hectic. I know there's games starting next week and I think even this weekend, there's some scrimmages.
And as much as I love hearing myself talk, this is our last one because it is not a very busy week, surprisingly. But Mary Poppins did perform this past weekend. I went saw it, it was amazing. And this was officially their highest attended, uh, show ever in Talon High School history. So they were very excited about that and I hope that everyone who went had an awesome time. And that's it. Any questions or comments can be directed towards us now.
I know, I miss the Mary Poppins, I'm so upset. I love going to the, and I heard that they had a.
It was excellent.
It was amazing.
They made her fly with whatever attraction. I mean, this was a good one, too.
There was a lot of good feedback on it.
Yes.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Oh, spring sports. If anybody wants a lacrosse little card that they're doing for twenty five dollars, let me know because I do have them. Because they're trying to raise funds for the netting around the field. That's what the lacrosse. It's one of the little cards that have like different. Yeah, coupons, like percentage of different things.
Any lacrosse player should have a twenty five dollars.
See, like. Is that there, yes? Okay, thank you ladies very much.
I don't think there's anything else, right?
Okay. Let's go to the superintendent's report.
Funny sitting here in attendance. Oh.
Oh.
Just got that. Just letting you know.
Oh, well, I just assumed he was not here, so I just assumed.
Is it under five?
Twelve hours? It's wrong. Not everything.
Five to eight.
Okay.
All right, ready? So superintendent's items, we have credit to tonight. Excuse me, the first one, it's, uh, one I'm very excited about. I do get to introduce to you Mr. Calarza Espinoza. It's a great pleasure to introduce him. He's worked here for some time, but, um, he's been elevated to ER, you know, Chief Business Officer. He is, um, you know, give you a little lead into him and then, you know, you can talk for himself and, you know, obviously ask him things. Prior to his life in finance operations, he was a paraprofessional, so he knows school districts and, you know, he's been involved at many levels and seen many things. Uh, he was, he worked at a distillery, so he's got a wide broad amount of experience. He was doing their bookkeeping at the distillery to be clear. And he worked for the private sector, worked for TJ Maxx. He's worked for payroll, you know, in, in finance world, payroll, accounts payable, accounting. He's always shown great leadership in this district and everywhere he's ever been, has the O eight five certification to be a business officer in Connecticut. He's talented, diplomatic, innovative. He has made a lot of, um, made a lot of things with the town, uh, very efficient and today love, love working with, uh, Mr. Calarza Espinoza. He's, he's really helped to make the town and school connection extremely effective as well. In the payroll and bookkeeping roles he had in prior districts, uh, he actually set up an electronic timekeeping system that I'm looking, asking him to look at for us here. He trained all the staff to use it, um, maintained amazing and excellent records. He was promoted to a senior accountant. He managed there as a senior accountant, the payroll, the budget projections, of course, state and federal reporting. There's one called nine four ones, a whole bunch of them, unemployment, TRB, W twos. Worked extensively with auditors. In fact, he worked very extensively, um, with the auditors in our case. And I think when you do meet them, when they come to the meeting on August twenty sixth, uh, I'm sure they will be complimenting Mr. Calarza Espinoza. They love working with him, as does the town. Um, and he's really forged and repaired some of the relationships that I think needed that. He's an amazing team player. He always goes above and beyond. His attention to detail and his expertise, you know, we, we first found those, uh, as he became our financial accountant, um, back in twenty twenty one. Um, and everyone was full, you know, impressed by all of the work that he could do and the broad, um, knowledge that he had and the leadership he took right away to really help. With the town, um, and others and otherwise. You know, his work with the general fund and grants, um, you know, he helped, uh, helped us with our self funded programs. He did, you know, reports that are not easy, like the eighty one forty one, uh, end of year projects and grant expenditure reports, uh, A D D R closing entries. You know, um, it was really something that the town and Lisa Hancock, you know, called over and said, who, who do you have over this guy? You're off, he's amazing. And I said, yes, he is. And that's why, um, early on, I did also mention to the board that he came highly recommended from the town. Everybody at the town feels that way and particularly Lisa Hancock, you know, if you ever feel like it, ask her to type it. He is. He has helped us with accounts payable challenges. He helped us out during a vacancy period when we had someone who was sadly, um, very sick. He really helped out, ran all the AP and check runs, did ten ninety nines without incident. I mean, he's saved the day for us so many times. He's helped our office innovate, become more efficient. He's gotten right into infinite visions and he's trained staff and we're doing stuff on infinite visions we were not doing before. He's, uh, diffuse some of the workload to other people in the, um, in the office now and they are more capable because of him. Uh, and so, you know, he's, he's just super highly respected by everyone who works with him. And he came highly recommended by the Connecticut Association of School Business Officers. Independent consultant reviewed and highly recommended him and our chief personnel officer, uh, also highly recommended him. So, you know, he's one of the smartest, most dedicated, most innovative and most capable business officers that I've ever known in the times I've been working at school. So we're very fortunate to have him and, uh, and that's my preamble for, for Mr. Calarza Espinoza. If anything you want to. Yeah, there's any, he's here even though he wasn't feeling particularly good. So I'm sitting right next to him. You know.
I promise, you won't get to say it. I promise. I don't know if you have any question for me. I think now is gonna be a good time.
You have any questions or he's gonna hang out. Oops, that, uh, for our next discussion, which is a much less pleasant one. For budget reductions, he'll be here and then.
It seems the internet may have. Be back up if anybody wants to use it on their laptop in their room.
This is, I'm not gonna transition us from that wifi because it will cut everybody.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. I'm just letting, because I want to make sure Lisa gets her. Self situated there, but I don't need to break up this conversation. So any questions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, again, like Jane said, welcome aboard. I think, you know, it's deleted, but it's a welcome nevertheless. This is my question in this role. What are some of your, your big goals over the next couple of years, um, in the business office for us?
Right now is to move the day straight from paper timesheet to accounting timesheet. Sometimes we have, um, issues with the paper timesheet. I had to deal with that before in the other districts. I'm looking to move the day straight, um, to a paperless timekeeping system. But the challenge is how I'm gonna accommodate that in budget. So we can do that, then we can definitely move maybe for FY twenty four or FY twenty five. Because I think I can get the job done in three to six months. So that's the biggest goal right now. I'm looking for efficiencies for accounts payroll, for payroll. I'm looking, right now I'm covering the accounting position because we have to eliminate that position. It was vacant, so I was willing to take over for the moment. So I'm looking for more efficiencies for my basically accounting position. So that way I can cover the two positions in a timely manner. So because I know for the audit, we have a couple of recommendations for the closing entrance. And I'm currently working on that to avoid that issue from, from happening again.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say welcome and, um, Dr. Will obviously spoke very highly of you. So I'm looking forward to, um, working with you at our finance meetings. So, Dr. Will, this is, seems like a good opportunity to delegate. So we'll just keep, uh, keep pushing you to, uh, you know, this way, if Mr. Calarza Espinoza can maybe answer a lot of our questions at FFC, that would probably be, be a great help, so.
Would be more than happy to answer any question with you. You know, it's a detailed object report that we can talk about in detail about those, um, over budget and all the, other budget balances.
Perfect.
That would be nice.
Right, great, thank you.
Well. Well, welcome very much. And in terms of the electronic, I think that's fantastic because I've definitely been in the, filling out the time card sheets with the little paper. And I'm like, oh, boy, this is, you know, so I definitely know that electronic timekeeping would be.
It will definitely help because to give you an idea, sometimes we have employees with the same last name. So we should mean, sometimes you can process the payment for one, for the one employee. And I have that issue before, so with the timekeeping system, you're gonna have an employee ID. So even if we have two employees with the same name and even the last name, they're gonna have a unique employee ID, which is gonna be connected with IV. And when we process payroll, we won't have that kind of issues anymore.
We're still back in the eighties from the way we do time sheets, really.
Oh, it's, it's.
We're not even doing punch clocks.
When you sub, like, it's literally a piece of paper. You put your name on it, you write the things down and you're like, no.
I think Mr. Calarza's plan is, you know, like, you can use your thumb prints, you can use, uh, your phone, you can check in in a private way.
Do paychecks, that's what I have in my work. And I have thumb prints, all that stuff and it's.
That we just switched to.
Oh, it's, I hate it.
Paycheck flex?
We can do them.
Yes. Issues all the time.
You know I'm fond of the eighties, he's gonna take us out of the eighties.
That was good here.
Do it.
But like, we do with the kids lunches, right? They, they buy their lunch with their fingerprint, like, we could do payroll. I mean, I couldn't do payroll that way. Like, I couldn't agree, so you got a great undertaking for you.
But like I said, stay away from paychecks. A lot of issues. Just. You can't, you can't, like, time, like, clocking back out, you have problems, it doesn't, it just kind of goes around and around and around, just like. Get you where you need to be, but that's a beautiful topic. Okay, let's go on to the budget reduction conversation.
Okay. So. Excuse me. So what I tried to do is, um, you know, I gave a couple of iterations. We had a conversation about this in a prior meeting. Uh, gave an updated version of it and this is my, you know, the, the best effort that I could make today. You know, again, this is a summary, we're short summary at the top of the town manager's adjustments, uh, his proposed budget, which, um, is at three percent for the board event. You see the figures, you know, reflected on the left table. Uh, ERF utilization, just to give everybody an update as to where we are in ERF as of actually, uh, yesterday. It's six fifty eight, oh fifteen. Also, this highlights the utilization that we would be, uh, making of it for this particular budget, two twenty eight for the technology initiative items. An offset of two seventy six, six, is it five fifty or six? The highs are small, but it, you know. Basically, it's two seventy six, five fifty for transportation. That would leave a hundred fifty three for the, uh, four sixty five of ERF. So we've already committed to the two twenty eight. The proposal that I would be making to you tonight would be to commit the two seventy six, six fifty for special ed transportation. That would leave one fifty three, four sixty five. And what we've been trying to do is limit the amount of ERF we're using. So one of the ways that we did that was we actually, uh, looked at, and this is a model that can be done and there's no problem with it and no problem in audit with it. We have services right now that are outside of our operating budget, our food service program and our FRC program. We're looking around in other places, they charge the programs for things that, um, that we do for them. So one of the ways that we tried to recover some of the money here and, and offset the budget is by charging the FRC and charging food service for various programs. Various things that we do for them, from accounting to other HR services. That is legally allowed, so this is the extent to which we could do it. I didn't want to take that too far, but we're able to offset our impact by forty six thousand, forty eight, by such charges, um, to be in, to be.
Is that the first blue line on the action thing?
Yeah, the, the amount of FRC, I called it revenue, but that's really, it's just charges that we are, we're charging them from their, their, um, you know, from their budgets. So, um, the amount of reduction accounted for below is the remaining amount that had to be allocated as reductions. That totals one million, two thirty three, five thirty six, which equals the reduction of the town manager, one, two thirty three, eight thirty. Well, sorry, it should be five thirty six there. In any case, that bottom, what I'm about to show you at the bottom is all of the stuff that gets us there, okay? So, transportation, um, went back to the company and they are willing to do a nine point five percent in the first year instead of a thirteen, which recovered eighty six thousand, four thirty nine. ERF offset, um, would be about two seventy three, one seventy, two seventy three, one seventy three. Seventy six percent reimbursement, um, excess cost adjustment. We're gonna get a little bit more back in excess cost this year, but it's not as much as was previously thought. Kevin Chambers, um, uh, we reached out to Kevin Chambers at the state and he articulated that it would be more like seventy six percent, which is the equivalent of about fifty eight thousand. Energy pricing and diesel, we're gonna recover about seventy five thousand, four hundred and six, time eating about forty five, up ninety. Uh, nurse subline that we talked about, twenty one oh fifty one, unemployment adjustment about thirteen nine sixteen. State trooper, public safety reduction of about three thousand. Unemployment aspect, actually, you know, that's why it's minus, so you'll see it go up and down a bit. ABIS, an elimination of the ABIS position at THS, one of them in the fringe benefits. Elimination of a math coach position, um, TMS, THS and the benefits, leap to THS math and the benefits. The counselor was saved and so were the librarians. What we did was we took the offset, you know, we would hire at an MA seven level. The, um, counselor that we hired was fairly high and, you know, was fairly expensive, at about eighty eight. We would be hiring at an MA seven, which would be much less. So the differential between what we'd hire at, what we were paying is twenty eight oh sixty seven. So I tried to pick up a few dollars there. Uh, and keep that position. So in this, in this most recent proposal, we keep the counselor, um, and we keep the librarian. Um, so, let's see, what did I? Okay. Team grade leader positions are still here. That would be one ninety nine, three oh five. Rope para nineteen, one eighty five, and then the benefits, custodian forty five, seven sixty four in the benefits. Business teacher, uh, fifty six, four ninety eight in the benefits. Child development teacher, I put that position back in because for a point five position, it's fairly costly. Um, it's fifty seven, five forty eight, um, it's position plus the stipend. Um, and the fringe benefits that go with it. And then moving a K two teacher to a grant that, uh, we're, we're going to get. Moving K two teacher to an anticipated grant, a little bit of the fringe goes over too, so, um, we'll, we'll have a little bit we can save there. All school individual contract employees next year would be limited to a one percent. And that would save about twenty two thousand. So between all of these mitigations, we're able to get to the number of the one point two million. But that. You know, and we're able to recover the librarians and we're able to recover the council. So this is my current proposal for the board. Using everything and frankly, I can think of to, to, to leverage for this. I don't know, um, Mr. Calarza Espinoza, do you have any thoughts on this either, anything else to add?
I don't have anything for the budgetary that chance on the morning.
Just a quick question, though. Just looking back at your proposed potential reductions back on February first. We had like the Lexia subscription that wasn't used much for twenty thousand and then it was the pole vault.
Yeah.
Twenty six. Are those not on the table anymore?
No, there, I think the, we took out the, the, what was called supplemental, like, there's a, there's different kinds of Lexia and we took the Lexia already.
So that's already been removed.
Yes, and then the five jump pit thing, I think is also, so part three.
And then the pole vaults. Replacing.
Right.
So now, when did we, because when we submitted our board event budget, I thought we didn't take anything out. So I guess my question would be, when did those things get reduced?
I, I thought they got reduced somewhere between the SPD and the V O E. That's, that was my recollection.
I would say I've been reduced when we put the.
The child here.
Done to just childcare, but I think those were already like ones that we had voted to them.
But I mean, and, you know, that would be twelve, you know, so I can go back and check it.
I'm just curious.
The Lexia stuff is about twelve.
It was only twelve, right? I was looking at the twenty and then I was looking at the pole vault of twenty six. Because I thought when we submitted our budget.
Yeah, it's there.
We didn't take anything.
So the left deal, so you're, we're thinking back about what you did with the child development. It is twelve, it is still there, it's twelve thousand, it's still there. We didn't take that in order to balance the, the child development, so it is.
Okay, just, I'm just thinking, if there's a way we can do a couple like ten thousand here, ten thousand there and maybe save a position.
The Lexia was never officially out, but it's about twelve. Um, and what we, what I've done here too is, there's small items, like shot clock is five, you know, um. I, I'm, this isn't the final final and also we threw the twelve and the five, but what I'd probably do with that is I'll reduce our ERF in time.
Okay, so your ERF impact is basically a plug.
Yeah, and what I've done here is, everything I can find, I try to take our ER. And at this point, my goal is to take the ERF impact down because you're, we're just passing that burden off to next year. Anything we use the ERF for, we have to make up for next year. So, um, we're still going through to find those little things. We're gonna be able to put the shot clock in that end of year expense here, that type of thing. Um, and that twelve and that, it'll probably come between twenty and forty more, but I would take that out of the ER, you know, reduce the ERF with it.
No, that, that makes sense to me because I'll be honest with you, seeing that era. Where it is. Makes me very nervous.
Yeah, and that, my goal is, now that we've got librarians and council back, which is what I think people really, I mean, there was a lot of energy around it. Not that there's energy around that, there isn't energy around that thing, but those were the two big ones. My goal is just to try to minimize that era because that's just next, that's just gonna hit us again next year as hard or harder.
One of the things I want to say. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just agree with Christine about that. I think when we came on the board, the ERF was somewhere close to a million dollars, like nine hundred thousand and change. And now it's, well, like, this goes through, it would be under two hundred thousand, so that's huge. And, you know, the way this year's going, are you gonna put away this year like twenty dollars of the ERF? Yeah, there's not. Yeah, whatever you can find in the couch cushions, I thought very much, so. Yeah, that, that would be, you know, my ask if you would, whatever we can do now, just to preserve that, maybe build it up a little bit. Well, that's where with your, with your doorstep, that is where mine, it would just be to try to eliminate the, the impact of, of that. Because if we are. Cause if we aren't gonna get any, you know, I, I, there's an ARPA meeting tomorrow, if, if nothing's happening from that side, then the only real offset you have is your own E R F, so I would be trying to lower that impact to the lowest possible point. And the other thing is, if you scroll all the way down on this document, there are the previous things eliminated.
Uh, I think the, yeah, it's like part.
So that, that was just something to show you, you know, show you that, you know, some of these I had made tables before, so I put some clarification, cause the tables are slightly older, and then the red kind of clarifies what changed, cause we had child development, then we put it back. Then we took it out. So there's some, the red gives you what happened here, um, but most of this is, is exactly stated. Um, so you can kind of see that there's quite a bit of pulling out of stuff prior to even the stage you're at. Yeah, and then the positions, you know, I, I included the narrative originally from the S P D that talked about the other ones. So that we don't forget, we also did the by pairs, we did the, you know, the intact staff member for, uh, staff's teaching position F P. Um, you know, the, um, you know, the middle school, uh, the interventionist, you know, all of those things were already out. That they, sometimes because they're not listed in this, people forget that we already, there are already staff reductions prior to that.
Yeah.
And already many other reduction prior to that, right? So just so, you know, give people perspective, but this, this would be what my team is right now. At this time, that's what we would be doing, and then anything else, you know, that we can pull out. Um, and, uh, Mr. Glasest knows, and I've been working on that, you know, um, shot clock came up today, and we were thinking, well, it's five, we could probably put that in the, you know, can cover it here. You know, we're frozen, but you might be able to get that done at the end of this year, and, and then that wouldn't be something, you know, we could offset that budget with it by that small amount, but again, everything that we would be deducting now would be deducting from here, and then get that usage down.
Yeah, that seems sensible, as the way it looks like we find this year, kind of, but like, you know, I mean, next year, and you almost have to resolve not to use it in your, in your budget, which is tough. Was there any other updates on insurance and the, the council meetings, and unfortunately I haven't had it?
Well, I've gone to each of the council meetings, yeah. There is a proposal right now, although I, I will explain it the way that I understand it, and we'll see what happens tomorrow night. Um, because I'm not sure, uh, I have not had a chance to read anything today, so there might have been some communications on it today, I did not see them. But what was proposed, um, last night or the night before, now all three meetings are kind of meshed together. Um, that an allocation from ARPA could be made, because ARPA couldn't use for that operational, you know, expenses, be considered potentially one of those. Uh, set aside would be, um, established, and then the differential between what we typically spend on insurance and what, uh, the elevated insurance amount is due to the claims. That differential would be offset by the set aside each month, so we go over that amount, let's just, we'll choose a number like five sixty four to six ninety two. Those aren't the exact numbers, but let's just say, the, uh, the new amount, you know, uh, average was six ninety two or six ninety eight, our previous was five sixty four. Any month that went above five sixty four would be offset by the set aside. So that, then we could lower our insurance budget impact by that amount accordingly, um, whatever that amount would be. You know, and that set aside would prevent the board from having the impact of, of that one point two million. However much they set aside is however much would be deducted off of the differential. So that impact would be, uh, you know, less or much less, depending on the amount, and the board could reduce its budget accordingly. Um, that's, I think, what's on the table for conversations tomorrow night at the ARPA committee. That's how I understand, um, without having seen anything else on it. And so if that happened, you know, if we got a two hundred thousand dollar offset, you, you could potentially restore two hundred thousand in that scenario, and you could choose to do, yeah, yeah, well, I wouldn't, I would still even certain things. But you could, you know, you could restore the liaisons, cause people made comments about the liaisons and that. I know, uh, or, or something else, you could restore some of that. But again, the thing to keep in mind about that is, um, that may provide temporary offset if insurance claims did end up being that high. And did, that was the new norm, then this, this would be something that would happen again next year, if that were to happen. And then, and there wouldn't be ARPA money at that point. So, um, it would be an offset, would be hope that the trend is, you know, that the, it's an anomaly and not a new norm.
Yeah. Which is a big concern.
Yeah. That's why.
I'm so glad you mentioned liaisons.
Well, I, I, you, you guys hadn't mentioned it at all, so I just thought of, you know, because it didn't come up at all.
Yeah, I haven't seen it all, no, um, yes, I just wanted to address that point, I'm extremely concerned with that, I'm not okay with that, um, as my, no, probably my number one thing on this list right now. Um, I would hope the entire board would be considering that. Um, we had a board member respond to the community and us talking about, um, worried about staff issues and staff retention and things that are in and outside of our control, this is inside our control. Um, and I do think that this is going to be a very big issue for us. I'm still not clear about how these, the things that our team leads do, um, which I think I gave as much of a highlight as I could a couple of meetings ago, I'm not sure where those things are gonna fall, I'm not clear on how that's going to affect our um, negotiations, again, we're going into, we're doing pairs right now, we're going into teachers again this summer. Um, you know, a couple of years, administrators will be back up, so not sure where those responsibilities are all gonna lay out, they don't see how one, we're gonna keep our great teachers, two, we're going to keep attracting talent with removing things like this. And three, we're going to avoid that, you know, having an issue in our upcoming negotiations. And then I have one other question, the K to two teacher to an anticipated grant. How long would that grant cover that position, one year?
Oh, just one more year.
So we'd be worrying about it again following?
Most of these things you will probably do. They'll have to be two months.
So that's a concern for me as well. You can talk about liaisons though, if you want.
I will say too, though, as a balance to that, um, you know, I take advantage of every grant I see, I did see another one drop for staff, but I have no idea if we're gonna get that or not, I will not be in a timeline enough to, to just decision. But there is one more I can go after for another staff offset, and I will go after it, um, in the process of working on it now. But it won't, we won't know in in this timeline.
Throw something out there, because, um, you know, there, there's a lot of reasons why that like child development class just, truly just hits home for me. Um, I'm still very concerned about that, because I still feel as though, like, I'm trying to find the right word, so it doesn't come out wrong, but, you know, it is a predominantly, I would assume, female student class that people are taking. You know, they're, they're aspiring to become teachers, childcare workers, a parent, like, they're, it's just essentially, I feel like that course is not just an internship, like it shouldn't be. It's, it's teaching a life skill to these students. And I just, that's what I, I really am, I'm having a very hard time with that, so, so, I know liaisons is one of them, but that childcare development is, is something that I still feel like we should not be losing, I feel like we're still helping a lot of students with that, and I feel it's a disservice not having that as an actual educational instruction versus a credit, so, so having a really tough time with that. Um, even with this the M A seven hire for T M S, are we gonna even be able to find anyone for that? Like, what are, what are the real realistic? I mean, we have a hard time getting people in and staying, paying what we are. Is it realistic that we're gonna be able to get, uh, I wrote it down, but, M A seven hire?
Well, you know, it, it's realistic, but it's not, not at all, you know, one hundred percent. Um, for instance, we have hired new staff right now that are in the M A three, M A seven zone, so it's possible. It's just a matter of who's out there. If we are able to get on top of that right now, um, then, you know, start posting for it right now, we have, I would say we have a reasonable, you know, reasonably um, optimistic chance of doing that, cause we would be posting in March, April, May, June, and we have a number of months to post before we start, right? And if we waited on that until midsummer to post, then we would probably have a problem. Um, the market's not huge for any entrepreneur position right now, it's very, very hard. And, um, it is very competitive and it's on their side, you know, they, they call the shots a lot of times, wherever they're coming, you know, so, um. You know, it's, it's just a way of keeping that, that position, and I think we could fill it because we're starting in March.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just feel like there's so much here, I mean, even the liaisons, I mean, I, I definitely agree with that, that there are a lot of teachers that rely on that, and it gives them the, the, the chance to voice their opinions and work through what they have. And I just think that that's still something that's like super important, but I do know, like, the insurance piece, you know, I do feel as though we have to get more in depth with that and find out what's happening, because that is a, a huge chunk of the budget. And I feel like something, we have to be able to do something before we're looking at cutting all the staffs and going out, like, I just, there has to be something. I just think, you know, whether we have a whole meeting, just in terms of how it works, I mean, I know, um, the town council meeting on Monday? I just meant say Monday, it was Monday, right? Um, Maray had said that she would like a little bit more understanding as well of, it was a peasant for the town side, board side, so I think that we really should have that information to be able to say, you know, is this really the best case scenario for us? I, you know, I'm sorry, but I just, I can't say, okay, don't worry about the insurance, and, okay, let's just make all these cuts. I just, I have a very tough time with that.
Well, there's four members of the ARPA committee, and so all, you know, they'd have to have three out of the four vote to, in favor of doing the opposite. So, uh, I think it's representative from Ms. Natcho, Brian Foley, Lisa Hancock, and all the other four members.
So meaning is for the ARPA's four thirty.
And it was Lisa Hancock's and Brian Foley's suggestion to do, to do so, correct? I think that was.
Yeah, I understand, they suggested. Um, so that'll be how that gets handled, if that's voted down, or if it's a split, and I think it's, I mean, obviously, before it would be rejected, but I think even two two, it has to be, it has to be, you know, it's bigger, can't be split.
Yeah, cause I know that you had written in about the insurance piece, go ahead.
I didn't talk too much to Mr. Foley about the insurance, I met him last week. I was told no, so I'm surprised as far as a reserve, as far as on his fund balance, as far as ARPA money, so I'm actually very surprised that that is on the table. I was told that this was our board event chair. A lot of it had to do with a couple of years of that kind of being our savior, if y'all remember the past couple of years, that always was kind of the savior at the end. So it's just not been funded as much as it needed to be. So, that was that was my impression, so whether something's changed, I'm not sure, cause I actually did talk to him, that was probably close to two weeks ago now. Um, so I don't know, cause my understanding also with ARPA is it was, it's not for recovering expenses. And I don't think we can prove that this, even if this insurance is a blip, we can't prove that, it's too much of an unknown, so that was my impression, why something like ARPA couldn't even be considered for it, so I'm not really sure where that meeting is going tomorrow. Um, but that was what I was basically told. Hmm, so, not sure.
I just want to thank you for asking those questions.
Which I really did try.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did, I, I brought up, I think surely there's something somewhere, I even said, like, even if we just earmark it, but we don't touch it, but then if we have to touch it, well, you know, then we'll, we'll put it through our operating budget.
Sounds, sounds like something you said influenced them.
Maybe, yeah, maybe, I don't know.
You know.
No, I pat myself on the back, because I definitely walked out of that meeting feeling a little defeated. But, um, but maybe. Again, so I, I guess I'm just saying this to you all, because I don't want us to put all of our eggs in the ARPA basket. Because I just, I'm not seeing that truly as an answer, but you never know, stranger things have happened.
But I think, you know, Mr. Bowden made a comment last, last night, what?
Monday.
Most recent meeting, um, you know, he said that the, I'm not gonna get it right, but he said that the, you know, our lack of consensus for our vote, um, had an imprint on the decision he made when he put the percentage, so I do think that it sounds as if, that we're all in line, that we're looking for the town to help us in some way, shape or form with this insurance scheme, and looking for more information, so I think, you know, you would hope that the consensus that we have there would maybe be influential in some way. And, you know, given, like you said, there are other options as well, other than ARPA, and exactly how you put it, we don't necessarily have to use this money, it can be earmarked, to make these kinds of detrimental cuts. With, with the maybe, wouldn't it be safer and better for the schools in the town if we saw what happened and at least gave it this year before we did this to our education system, so I think they still owe us a lot of answers, and they owe us a lot of consideration and discussion on this, you know, it was briefly talked about in the meeting, you know, I know we've seen and heard these things, like you have, and and things on social media, but really, they should be having that discussion in that meeting tomorrow, and then we should be hearing from that, you know? How many meetings are we gonna have that seems like it doesn't make an impression on people's original feelings, um, either way? But, you know, I, I, I just, I hope that they look into it, I hope that they look into all of the different ways that they can, and again, thank you for having that discussion.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know, I also, there was a comment, kind of what we're going through on the town council saying that, you know, if our educational system is failing, then fine, we can put more money to it, but I don't think that that's being responsible. I think that we need to ensure that our school systems are still up and running, and that we're doing well, and we're exceeding, and we are doing the best that we can. It's just that this stuff is going to impact, I don't wanna see our school system go and fail, like this, what the counselor had said, in order to get help on funding. And the big elephant in the room, just the big price tag coming from is insurance. And, you know, I think that without that, we would be okay, but it's the fact that we have that, like I said, the big elephant, price tag, whatever you wanna call it, that no one wants to really talk about, and maybe we need to make a different decision, you know what I'm saying? Like, we just need to look at all options, because now we're talking, we're putting staff, or students. And what's already gone on here that we didn't even talk about was the interventionist in the sixth grade that was already gone, and you know, even when people are talking about what we've had, what we don't, for educational purposes, the five oh fours and I E Ps are not what they used to be. They are not what they used to be, we are skyrocketing in our elementary school, so does that mean that we need pairs one to one in order to comply with regulations for the state for our students? We can't just say, we don't need these positions, I mean, this is an ongoing problem, what was the percentage, it was thirty something for elementary?
Yeah, so, yeah, that was thirty two percent.
Thirty two percent of our students, right now, right now.
And most of those are women to grade one now, and, you know, we'll see what happens.
That's still, that is thirty two percent of our students that have I E Ps of five oh four, which now means that our principals have to sit in conversations, we have to pull teachers in conversations. I mean, it's not just this, like, piece of paper you sign, and you're like, okay, you're, you're good to go. I mean, you have meetings, you have all this that did not, like, in the past ten years, that has changed, that, and education is not the same, so we are looking at things that, I mean, even intervention, that wasn't a thing when we were growing up, that wasn't a thing ten years ago. And the interventionists help with the special ed costs, because they, you know, perhaps just giving them a little bit of extra help will get them back on track. So I, I'm, yes, people get mad at me that I am very emotional about this, and that's fine, but this is the educational for our future of our students and our district, and I'm not okay with this insurance piece, like, I really, I'm, I'm having a very tough time looking at this and being like, I'm okay with this, I'm okay with letting all this go. Because it's not right, we're not doing what's best for our students. So, that's, sorry, I get, I get upset, because I've seen it change, I've seen what happens.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So I guess my question would be, are we gonna develop a plan going forward to address this insurance expense? Because we're calling it a blip this year, but what if we have a blip next year or in two years? Because the way I'm understanding it is if we have this insurance blip. Our district, meaning the school system, is really not getting much out of the budget, let's be honest. What, there's no increase, there's a blip, actually, our school system loses. So I think we we also need to be proactive with the town about devising some sort of a plan. Christine says this could be a recurring expense, and so if we're gonna be honest about it truly and call it. A recurring expense, then we need to develop a plan to to address that recurrent expense. So that our district can flourish, even if we have a blip.
Yeah, I mean, what will happen is, let's say your blip goes in perpetuity, you will get hit with the same type of increase next year, but you want nothing to offer. You won't be able to offer, so you'll have to eat it. Um, and then it 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 adjusts to the high, the higher level of of cost. So it'll naturally adjust to the higher level of cost if the blip is, it is not a blip. Because you'll have to increase the costs, and then that's what you'll be paying in perpetuity for the new, it costs more, you spend more, and that will be. Hopefully, that will not be in perpetuity. Um, what I have seen is every three to four years, you have some kind of high high interest since you started. It's been, you know, on the third or fourth year, I don't know why it's the third or fourth year, but if you look back now, you see these. And it goes down. You know, your your program has has helped this district and this town massively, so you you have had um. Really good experience with with each overall, um, but.
But that that concerned me though, because if you say it's every three to four years. Then that becomes what a trend would be long term of three to four years, so maybe we need to look at what we offer. Because what do we have for employees, four hundred?
Yeah, forty, forty eighteen.
Four, four eighteen, what does the town have? Fifty something, so then you figure if this is the insurance piece, and are we offering all the same packages? Town and board, like they pay the same deductible?
Well, so that conversation is a highly complex one. It's been thrown out there like, you know, let's just get them all on the same page. Well, they're the Teamsters, we're C, you know, we're C S E A. We have UPSU, C S E A, T E A, and we have like three or four bargaining units, they have their own bargaining units. I don't think it's possible to get all bargaining units in exactly the same position, because. Some of these bargaining units, you know, they are big, and they have all kinds of influence, and they also have um. You know, a lot of data and support, somebody like your nurses don't have anymore. You know, so it's it's important to try to keep that in mind when we're bargaining with them, because they don't have some big stream powerful group behind them. So these these blocks, yeah, I would say, you know, I will. We'll go find the distillery that that. We can actually make, you know, none of all of here. For anyone who can make that all align, that would be close to walking on water, really, to have all bargaining units across board and town aligned. So that that might not ever really come to that, so having said that, sure, that would be awesome if they could. You know, right now, though, you can see in our own, um, you know, our own, our own experience. That really what we're challenged by is, you know, we do have a lot of places that will come along and pay people more than we do, so they go. You know, and that's, we're in, we're in the middle, the mid low range of what we, you know, it's a fair and competitive wage, but it's not. As high as some to ones around, and that, and, you know, once they're in for a few years, it doesn't make sense to go anywhere, but at the very beginning. You know, you can lose somebody you trained. Um, so it's not like they're getting a rich, rich deal here, um, and that's why you see some of the attritions. You know, you you gotta competitively bargain to contract with every unit here, it's it's.
And and I'm not saying that's not what I'm saying for in terms of pay and everything, I just didn't know. If we have four hundred and eighteen versus their fifty-ish, which obviously they they need us to do the town side. Because you put in such a soft bucket of people, I mean, you'd have to have one of that.
No, I think they said that, they said, were they, they said it would cost two million dollars if they had to do it without us?
Yeah, and one of the meetings, a question was asked, and and they answered that, you know, you know, that. It requires the entire unit, meaning all of all of the employees in order to. To fund it.
Yeah, no, I still go back to her question, and, you know, how does it all break down? We need to really start seeing what's happening, especially over three to four years. That just tells me that, you know, perhaps it needs to not be this huge. Bubble, whatever you wanna call it, it just, there's. I have a very hard time accepting the fact that these are the things that we have to do in order to do the insurance piece of being super high. So I just.
Yeah, I mean, in the industry, blips happen too. So no matter who you go with and how you do it, these blips occur. Um, this blip, you know, I I I argue this was a, this was a blip that was coming. Because, you know, people put off their stuff. People put off most of the things they were doing during COVID, and now they're doing them. Um, yeah, and you didn't go get your cancer screening during COVID, so we have the people going to get their cancer screens now. Who didn't do it a year ago, plus the people who would have done it now anyway, and so you've got double the number of cancer identifications presumably. So I I don't think this is completely out of whack with what we could have logically kind of seen. And frankly, you know, because of the way that it has been managed, you you have have an excellent ability to respond to it. Because other places that are not, you know, self insured just took the hip without any offset whatsoever. I have some other districts that are in the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen percent range that. They're just eating the entire thing, there's no offset whatsoever, because they don't have any fund to offset that. They don't have any, you know, any mechanism, so. This goes way back to the time of Steve Werden, and this is really something that, and I give him credit for the genius of it, um, you know, and. Worked with the right people, pulled it together, and I've kind of, you know, learned from him, and. Works in the way that I thought, you know, I learned from him how how to proceed in a way that's helpful to everyone. Um, this has saved us many times, and and arguably has already saved some of the impact now. The offset, that's sixteen point four two percent, is after six hundred and seven hundred and sixty six thousand. We had that, we had that to you. So that that's not something we should just, you know, sneeze at, that that was a pretty big thing. So I'm just making a plug for the each of and self insurance has has helped so many times and helped here too. It it, we just have a terrible, terrible. So. Just wanna make sure everybody's feeling okay about that.
No, we'll be waiting on tomorrow's meeting at four thirty to see what the A. R P meeting. Ask aside any other.
I do. Okay, so I just wanna confirm librarians, so what, because on this list is not a complete running total. There's other stuff, so all librarians from all three, all four schools are back in this list. The counselor at T M S, we're just doing a different level.
Right, and for all intents and purposes, the counselor is is restored. The librarians are restored.
Okay.
Uh, what we traded for that was A V I S, you know, out of T H S. And we we were charging F R C and good service for services.
Okay.
And by doing that kind of thing, we've lowered our E R F usage, the E R F usage. Um, without some of these changes, it'd be three hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand, so we've got it down to about two seventy thousand. Probably can get that down to fifty, my goal would be to get that down. I I I don't wanna put a figure out there, because I don't want it to be like, well, they didn't get it. My goal would be to get that down as far as possible, um, so we're using as late. I I would not change this anymore at this point, other than anything else that came back. I would use the offset E R F at this point. So that's what I would do moving forward, because that that's gonna. This thing is just gonna hang on for next year and hit us, so I, anything else that we find. I would keep those the same and and bring E R F usage down.
So the stuff that's not on this list, or the reductions that are not on this list. Is the reductions from your original proposed budget, correct?
Well, there's. Yeah.
Because that was already gone, it was never on.
Right, you like the interventionist that, you know, that, um, you know, Ms. Longford's speaking about, that's already gone. The one point five pair is already gone, the the, yeah, tech, E T I, T, the one point O T shirt, gone, all those are already out.
And that was our.
So that goes, if you scroll back down to sort of the S P B one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my.
That narrative will give you all those positions that were already out, plus we made I C M A, O P A, course reimbursement, tech, you know, these were already out. And so there's an articulation.
Kind of huge personnel positions.
Right, they're out already, that's. Unless, and if we put those back, we're gonna now all of that.
It means nothing.
Well, now you're gonna.
Right.
I would not, I would highly recommend not adding back positions right now. Only because if you did, for instance, it's a difficult conversation. You think you can't add it without taking something or escalating E R F usage, and add the E R F usage. That just pushes it down the road to next year kind of thing.
Well, I guess the big things that concern me is the the leader positions and the liaison, so. I know it's a big chunk, that's two hundred thousand dollars, I get it, but as Jen said. For all the points she said, you know, retention, um, you know, team building, negotiations coming up. A lot of these are most senior tenured. Quali-, you know, very qualified, you know, high level, there's a reason why they're in these positions to help get. The next level of lead of our educators up to be the next liaison. So they, you know what I mean, they're the ones who are getting our. Anyways, I I just, I get concerned with that, um. I get concerned with the K two teacher, and I and I get it. I mean, we've always, you you are a bulldog when it comes to attempting to get grants and stuff. So the K, I I appreciate the creativeness with that. Um, but I gotta get concerned, because that was one of my questions, grant how long, one year? So now we're looking at hoping to find a grant again next year. And I don't wanna just hang my hat on and and have all my eggs in one basket when it comes to this insurance piece, but I think. One is we need to hear the conversation tomorrow. Two is is hopefully, you know, some of us can be a part of that conversation, whether it be correspondence or whatever. I mean, the fact that several people have talked to Chief Foley or whomever else. They've, you know, corresponded with to attempt to. And I hate the word creative, because reality of it is, is. Junk for our for our school system, um, we need to just. Support our school system, and when I hear counselors saying, like last night, people don't listen to us, people don't pay attention to what we're doing. You know, this has been our his- our historical, da 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 da, it's defeatism thing. I'm listening, I get it, is it hard work to to get the word out, is it hard work to get people involved, is it hard work to? To educate people on what's going on and how this is truly impacting your kids? I mean, there's someone that I know in town that has four kids under the age of five, and the first year I ran for Board of Ed, she's like, six months later, she's like, hey, did you get the? Did you, when you see the Board of Ed, like she was blissfully happy what was going on, and I don't wanna say it here, because that's a bad word. She was trusting in what was happening, but she's got four kids that are going through our school system, and she doesn't have, you know, she doesn't know. What's going on, and it's so people that we need to help know what's going on. And get involved in what's going on, no matter what that looks. Um, I think we need to have a conversation about this insurance, but we'll see where that goes. But as Sophia said, we need to have some sort of. Set aside or allocation or preparation for if this is a non-blip. You know, kind of like we were talking about the turf bill, we put some money in a kitty, you know, to to create a savings or something. I mean, we definitely have to figure out this situation, but then also not make it. Then also not make it a situation going forward. We have to, we can't just be figuring out the eleven thousand scrambling, can't be proactive. So I I don't know, I'm not okay with any with any of these reductions, but mostly the. The ones that I mentioned. Specifically really gave sense.
I'll get back to you one question, just one, one quick question, um, Dr. Willett. And I probably asked this, I don't think I reported in the questionnaire, but where do the funds for the childcare? Program that they collect, where do those funds go?
Um, they go back, but there's not a lot, you know, and we can offset, we can, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna. I understand what you're saying, and I don't wanna take away the value of what you're saying, you know, the.
The lower it is. Just that's the total, like it is.
It's so, that's a fifty seven thousand dollar program, it's it's an M A seven. That that is, that point five is as much as it would take to bring back the entire counselor.
But what were the funds, you didn't answer my question.
Well. That's not the most, no, yeah, I'm gonna have to. It's just not, it it won't, it's not enough, anywhere near enough, it may cover a tiny or a stipend type side. But it's just, uh, if you think about it, it's point five for forty people. We can do it with an F R C, um, we can probably do this program with, um. F R C extension, it covers a lot of that.
I was just wondering where are those funds?
So I'm gonna be the the pessimist, the realist, um. I don't like any of this either, as a lot of you know. I ran for the Board of Ed because of math. It's killing me that the math coach that we just put in is being taken out. I just had somebody text me this morning asking me for the name of a pre calc tutor. So that is killing me, but I think we also have to be cognizant of the fact that. We are going to have to take some of these out, whether we like it or not. We are going to have to kind of pick and choose the ones that have the least impact on the least number of students. Because let's face it, we are just digging a bigger hole. We have to come up with now the five hundred thousand that we're taking out of the E R F. We have to come up with the, um. The teacher contract negotiations, the parent negotiations, the bus increase. And we are probably, I'm just kind of doing quick math. We might be at six percent just for next year. Oh, because I think we have some grants that are also done, that we wanna be able to bring back those positions. That doesn't even include if there's an insurance blip. So I just want us to, as painful as it is, I think we need to still look at some of these things. And. We're going to have to make some tough decisions, and it stinks, but I just, you know, we have to think a little bit about the future. That E R F was great when it was nine hundred and some thousand, but we have just depleted that. That was our our, you know, catchall for our Chromebooks, for our laptops, for our Promethean boards, it's it's gone. So I I I know how difficult it is, I I I hear you with the child development class. And the business teacher, even that, I'm like, oh my gosh, of all things, but. I just think we need to look at some of these things and figure out what will impact the least amount of students. I kind of, you know, liken it to when the power goes out town. You know, however source decides who gets fixed first, it's who it will affect the most number of houses. So I think we just need to look at that. It it's awful, I I get it, I don't want to see any positions, I'm glad we're bringing back the librarians, and I'm certainly glad about the counselor. I know a lot of you are very passionate about the rope, but I think the counselor would keep the skills for adolescents, is that correct, Dr. Willett? So I think we have to look at it as an offset, even though I understand. We want it, we want it both, I think we just have to, so I'm just kind of looking at it from a future perspective, I mean. To get everything back that we could potentially, or to the budget from next year, for fiscal year twenty five, just to bring everything back. We're looking at some really high numbers, so I I I hate to say it, but I think we need to make some tough decisions this year. And then hopefully next year, we'll even out, maybe we'll get lucky with the insurance, but there's just no guarantee.
It is scary to see E R F being down one fifty three.
That's like painful to me, that it's real, that was always our, that was our rainy day fund, our emergency money. And that that's, it's hard, and we did a lot of. Benaglin, if you will, during those two COVID years to, you know, really.
Bring that up, like Jacob said, when we get thirty dollars out of the nine thousand that was left over, because. Bring that up, like Jacob said, when we get thirty dollars out of the nine thousand that was left over, cause I mean, we do have a budget freeze going. Right now, it's just so really what what goes in there, thirty dollars.
We can't rely on anything, I would say.
Um, I'm gonna be a realist, and I'm gonna say that. I understand if there's a lot of things that we're gonna need to take in consideration, we're gonna have to make hard decisions, we pre-invested, and that's why we're here. Um, but the team and grade leader positions and the curriculum liaisons, it's not something that I'm willing to take up to. The T M S counselor, whatever level it might be, it's not something I'm willing to. I think utilizing your resources, i.e. having conversation with the town. I having conversations about the ARPA funds, I having conversations about other funds. There is a possibility, I've seen them do, moving money around and using different funds for different things when. Things have to happen, it's, you know, people, you know, say that Dr. Willet, he does magic with his budget sometimes when he's. Gotta deal certain numbers, I think the town needs to assist us with some magic, and I think there's opportunity in accounts and places. Specifically this A A R P A fund, and I think that. Yes, we're gonna have to make tough decisions, yes, do I like seeing the custodian gone, the broke para, the leap mass. Defringe, none of the the A B I S T I T H snap. Well, like any of the other ones that you gave us prior to that. But we still need to have conversations about it, and as I was saying before, you know, that that's conversation happened, didn't get to finish what I was saying. Was that, so like Sophia said, we need to create a game plan of preparing to. Budget and set aside money for if this blip or something else comes out in the future. So we are not blindsided, and we're not stuck in this position of having this same conversation. That's.
I have a question, um, based on what Christine was just saying, you know, thinking about what. Next year's going to be like. If our insurance number was the typical insurance number, what can you roughly, so what? Percentage increase would we be asking, I mean, that was a big driver of six percent, right?
Well, I mean, you, at one point two million is, it'll get four hundred thousand roughly as a percent.
So.
So like three percent of your budget is insurance.
Right, so without that, without the blip, we we'd be around three percent of an increase, right? So should the insurance not happening, should it be a blip, and should that not happen again, all things relative, we would be looking at three percent.
Roughly, yeah, two point nine six, right.
Okay, and then. I kind of took part of what Sophia was saying as almost. So this could happen again, something else could happen again, I took it almost as if she was, part of it was that you were saying, it's unfortunate that. When something happens to us. There's no help being given, it's just you need to cut. You need to cut positions, that's what I took, like, there will be other things, there will be other things for the the other departments as well. Why aren't we being provided help in our type of need, we're all supposed to be working together, it's town. Not the school versus town versus public safety, it's all together. Was that?
Oh, yeah, I I definitely feel that way, and I definitely feel that it's just so unfortunate that we can't grow. Or even fund adequately because of a blip. And this blip could happen again, even if it's a typical situation, and we know it could hap- happen again in three years. So are we saying three years from now, you know, twenty twenty six, we're gonna have to cut? Right? So it's not just getting creative or doing the best we can, our school district shouldn't be that, our school district should be. Doing awesome, be more than creative, funding things to the to the maximum, to so that everyone can flourish. That's that's what I would want for, I think that's what we all want, university for our school system, and it's just so unfortunate that. We are, that we are not able to provide you the funds, Dr. Willet, to make our district flourish. And I think that's what's, we're all feeling so sad about, which I'm not crying about it, I'm just saying that it's just so unfortunate in that. This could happen in three years, and then we'll be cutting in three years because of an insurance blip, not because. Something went awry or. That's that's all, but I guess my question would be is what is the next steps, what are the next steps?
Four thirty tomorrow or a meeting?
Yes, and then after that. Then we, are we doing what Christine said and kind of seeing what positions or what pods are the most impactful? And kind of prioritizing that way, which I think is absolutely fair and reasonable.
I think before that, we need town council to look at some of the other funds that Christine mentioned as well. There's other ways to help besides.
You're a tax stabilization. I'm just fine, I'm gonna, I'm not touching that one, because I agree with the town on the other side, that's different. I threw a tax stabilization, I think I threw an ARPA. And then I didn't really have anything specific, I just said surely there's some, some funds somewhere. And like I said, I was more focused on, can you just earmark it for us, if we have to touch it, we'll deal with it at that point, but if we don't. Yay, you know, but.
So I'd like our town council to have those discussions thoroughly before we start making cuts.
Oh, I I one hundred percent agree with that, um, thoroughly. Because, like I said, to to look at this, and it's like, you know, I don't think anyone of us are, well, this was wonderful, you know. Yay, go talent, you know, I I just think that that conversation piece really does need to be. Need to be had fully to the full extent of what we could do, I, like I said, I just felt like. Watching that meeting on Monday, like they. Haven't been queued in, even with the joint meeting, with what we are saying and what we're doing, I just feel like it was. Let us know your thoughts, and I felt a little. Where have you been?
In the almost four years that we've been on board, have you ever felt differently about that now, just saying?
It it's true, it's true, it really. It's true, but it's just that when you have such a piece that's heavily dependent on what they can choose to do. It just kind of is like a kick. Trying to put it nicely.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Speaking of, I I think everything that I wanted to say has been said tonight. Um, this just feels, when I was, you know, eighteen, nineteen, coming to high school, watching the Board of Ed meetings, the guy that interested. Um, I heard the term kicking it down the road so much, and this, this, the the first line of this of this document, Dr. Will provided us. Um, the transportation, changing thirteen percent first year to nine and a half next year, and then eight point seven five, and then five percent years after. Instead of fifteen, five and five, and so that is the definition of kicking it again down the road. Um, and so, but that's, I mean, that is just one example out of, out of how many edits are here. Um, so, again, I think I, I think everything that I wanted to say has been said tonight, um. This is not, I don't think this is a, um, realistic. Realistic budget for our our school system heading into, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty three, uh, twenty twenty four, so, um. That's all, I, uh, that's all I got.
So tune in tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Four thirty, after, I'm assuming it's not a, we shouldn't, meaning that we belong in, so we could just get a update, Dr. Willet, on the. Dashboard, that would be greatly appreciated.
Keep in mind that you don't meet again till August, April twenty sixth. So.
Well, we have a ten degree meeting Wednesday.
For the purpose of of T M S principalship, but I would have to move forward with. Adjusting our budget probably before April twenty sixth. Because we have to be speaking to that in town meetings and all of that. Um, so, you know, what what I would be assuming right now is I would be taking everything that I've listed. And if I get anything back, I'm moving it and reducing E R F. So for instance, um, you know, the, to reference some of the, we may actually be able to take fifteen more from. If there's no childhood development program, we might actually be able to get a little bit more out of that one. And if I did get a little bit more out of that one as a reduction, then I would reduce E R F's impact, the impact on the era. So any, anything else we got that we found would take E R F down, that that would be my operating, my order, you know, my margin orders.
Just to replenish the E R F.
Everything we got there, and if anything comes up that we can move or move over, I would use the E R F, I would replenish the E R F or make that impact on the E R F less. And I would report it out on the dashboard.
Regardless, then you're saying that. These positions and everything that's on here, next I.
If. Well, I mean, we don't know what tomorrow will be, you know, i- if tomorrow happens, then you could tell me what to do, if tomorrow happens favorably, but. I'm saying if tomorrow did not, let's just take that scenario, let's say it's a split voter down. And what I would do is offset E R F with anything, you know, shot clock. E R, you know, Alexia, E R, try to get E R Fs, you know, low as possible. Utilization, because we rely on that, special ed, transportation, tech, you know, those are the three categories, and. We've seen a lot of fluctuations in special ed, it's scaring me. And that would be the place we would go if there was some old bridge, in fact, that is what we were using it for here, you had a very high. Impact with special ed, and we are using E R F to mitigate it as it was designed, I would like to see that in possible future. So that's why I would, anything new that came in, the biggest things that were talked about. We're like librarians, you know, counselor, we got that back in, now we want to lo- you know, lower the impact for next. And lower rank E R F impact. It's just a quick question, what's, so in in that case, what's the end? Goal for the E R F, at what point, that what number do you get to? Where you say, okay, we're comfortable taking it here, and then we build it back up, and that's, to Sophia's point, that needs to be a part of the plan. Uh, in 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 budgeting for, you know, the insurance piece, and so it it's more than just the insurance, it's also, if we're gonna build that E R F. How much of it, you know, per budget, um, over the next three years, and then if we run into insurance, and so. Um, that's my question, I don't know if that's a pristine question or Dr. Willet, um, what's the ultimate end goal for your app? Well, I mean, if you have anything you ever have left over, we would want to transfer to E R F, like we had your nine thousand last year. You know, turn, I, we want to make that request to transfer E R F, E R F was built up during a time that will very likely never, or very fond never. There's, uh, there'll be no probability that it happens again, we had seventeen, eighteen. And eighteen, nineteen, these weird, insane state budget years, there was money that you could move over, we didn't have a budget until November, we couldn't spend until February. It was a really screwed up time, the E R F was, you know, there was money pushed into the E R F during that time, and then subsequent to that. Some of the, you know, COVID stuff, transportation money and other things, and that we were able to leverage, cause buses are out. But in a typical year, it'll be more like the nine or the ten, we won't be moving tons of money into there. Which is why, you know, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're careful about it now. You know, um, and, you know, that's actually what people generally expect, they don't expect you to pass a budget, so you can throw a lot of money in the E R F. You know, that's generally their expectation, but E R F, just like the town, sign and unassign. Fund balances, you know, they can put some money in there when they have some money at the end, so quickly into our E R F. But the, it's never gonna, it's as we can, but it'll probably never be at the chunks we were able to do in the last five to ten years, that was. Unusual, massively unusual for some of those years, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna to answer Jayden's question, it's gonna take us a very, very long time to get back where we were, unless there's another pandemic. Which, um, but, um, I personally would love to see that at, end at like two hundred and fifty thousand, I feel like that's just a little bit more of a comfort level. But I don't know if we can get to that point, if, you know, based on what we are, but, um. Just to understand the timeline, so the council's gonna vote on Tuesday. So we don't actually know where the council's gonna land until Tuesday, so.
Yeah.
When do we have to? We don't have to really finalize, really.
Because they still have the referendum too.
So you don't, but April twenty sixth is, I think, beyond most of the, they started having town meetings, about what the budget is. Generally, people wanna know.
Where.
What's in, what's out, what, that's why I'm saying, unless, you know, you have major.
It was Tuesday, but it's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's next week, then they set it, then then the next iteration is the referendum in May. And, you know, by then, we can no longer make public statements, advocate that type of thing on budget, um.
Hold on, I have the twenty ninth that the budget is finalized on, so that's that's Wednesday.
So they're meeting on a Wednesday?
They're meeting when we do the principal, I think.
Oh, okay, so, just to also understand, so, everything that's on this list. Right now is what's on the table, if somehow, never know, ARPA or some other town money comes through. Would the liaison positions, it sounds like, just.
Thank you.
It would be, would be the one thing that could, but I mean, it would have to almost, I would feel like, be like. Three hundred thousand to come back, that we could then save the liaisons and put a hundred.
If I could have something tonight.
Something.
Like if I could have something tonight that you could tell me, if we got ARPA back. Where you'd want me to put that back, that would be helpful, because we, you won't meet again for a month, and a lot of stuff's gonna happen, take down that. So like, let's say you said, hey, if you get two hundred, put the liaisons and the team leaders back, right, now, then that's what I'll do. You know, or or put, you know, what X, Y, and Z up there back, that's what I would do, that would be wonderful if I could wash away with that. You know, otherwise, we're in this really.
We're in London.
Gray, and then I'll have to be making determinations, and, you know, if there's no ARPA money, then. With the understanding that everywhere, little chunk I get, you know, uh. Mr. Longwood, this knows, and I talk a lot, you know, we'll we'll look at culinary, really, these other areas, we'll look at, maybe there's a little more out of child development, because there's. Money over there.
If it's two hundred thousand for the team leads, leader positions or curriculum liaisons, is there a way we could restructure that to me? It still work, but yet. Not have such a high.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, if you're putting them back, you you put back, there's liaisons to high school, and then there's grading team leader, okay.
So regardless.
So. I wouldn't put him back in case we have a question.
I was just. The question. You have a handle.
Yeah, um. I don't know, I just think that it's, we could give you some advice tonight, my, my opinion is, is that. Without knowing exactly what the council's gonna do, and how much we may get back, which we may get no money back, but. Like, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm trying to think in my head, I mean, the first years.
And I, I, you know, you don't wanna wait for it.
We have, we have. That's. April vacation, that's why we had to cancel second meeting, but maybe we meet the fifth before going on vacation. Cause that's a week after they finalize the budget.
I would prefer to do that in.
That's a good idea, I think we really need to see if the ARPA does anything, what what if the town council adds, right? You know, we can have this discussion all day long, maybe we don't, it doesn't need to be quite this painful, I guess, is my point.
No, that's what I'm saying, thinking, so maybe we do that Wednesday, cause we were, I know we're talking about. You know, whether or not we needed a meeting, but maybe we just add that on a Wednesday, April fifth, and we essentially purely make it. A budget, so that, you know, it doesn't impact everyone too long, well, it's budget. Um, and so we can do that, so, Dr. Will, if you could, um, pencil that in.
Yeah.
Let's do that, and we'll have to find out what room we can even go to, where is all available.
I just want. I I feel like what Jaden was asking, and there was a piece about Christine asking. About the E R F, I wouldn't wanna agree to say anything that we get is just going into E R F. I think Jaden was maybe asking for, what's the cap on that?
You know, I would, I would.
You know, what's?
No, I mean, others, that stuff I'm finding.
Oh, I thought you were saying anything that the town. Okay, okay, got it, okay. And then, secondly, I don't think it's a good idea if we start picking stuff out, because we've got, you know, some people paying attention, and what if then it goes back to the meeting? That we only need two hundred thousand to save liaisons, or we only need forty five thousand to save child care.
I think we would really like. If there's any counselors on the meeting that are listening.
So I mean, I don't know if there are ARPA committee members.
Do you love what Steve did? Well, looking at the list.
Well, I think Jacob said, I think Christine said, actually, I think we need to see what the town council talks about and votes on. Because I just know they're going to try to come up with every option they can, because they have.
A heart for our students. They want to sit in this room and look at the beautiful artwork and think, we want to provide for our students.
I mean, I'm good with that hundred percent.
Yes, technical difficulties, I will suspect of difficulties. So, um, let's pencil in, April fifth, we'll have a meeting, purely budget, and go from there. Right before vacation, see, we're gonna go with great news from our wonderful counselors, who are going to support our educational system.
Childcare, so that doesn't displace our preschool program, it just displaces the, the high school students.
Well, those are little kids that would sign up for that, won't be able to do it, but we have a lot of preschool.
So they could do different preschool options with it.
Yeah, and we could probably create a similar program with a different structure that, that was managed by the F R C.
And would that be still in the T H S building, or would that be? Cause that's a lot of real estate to there, as long as.
It would take me a little while to, to do that, but I could get that going, and yes, we could, and it wouldn't, it would not. I don't want to be, I don't want to sound like I do not care about these, these things or these people. It's a terrible thing, and it's a good program, and I don't want to see anybody use any. And their employment, but we would be able to do that, and it would not be as expensive.
In a different capacity.
It would be a similar.
Becomes an internship.
Right, so, but I, I guess my question, and I get that, I get that part with the students, but I was talking about the preschool students themselves. What's happening with them, with the program, and you're saying there's alternate.
There's other pro, available programs that we offer in town, F R C.
So.
Not for teenagers.
Okay.
You know, like, they, they're not going there for the absolutely hat. We offer other options, I think it's just kind of.
Well, cause I guess the path, the road I'm going down, and it might be a snowball effect, the road I'm going down is, there's a lot of real estate at the high school that's slated for. This preschool program that has the playscape, that has the preschool room and all of that. Like, I go to the F R C at T I S, which granted, they do a phenomenal job with the old home ec classroom. Um, there, but that's a lot of real estate that could be utilized for other programs at the high school, like, if we're not gonna use it for that preschool. So it's, if it's actually displacing those preschool students to reallocate them to other preschool programs within the district.
Well, absolutely. I mean, we definitely can, with STEAM initiatives, for instance, uh, we are, right, we're in the process right now. And I don't want to say too much about it, because I don't want to say it and then not get it, but there is a possibility that we could receive a relatively needy STEAM grant. And we would be able to create a, uh, you know, special spaces that have, um, kind of Yukon Engineering Building. Yukon has a special space for, you know, to engage in experimental activities and all of that. We, we could retrofit it as it acts.
So it wouldn't be like just dead space and just.
No, we would never leave it as. However, having said that, we can probably, you know, take me a little while, but we could get going, another version of a child. Program, and that just wouldn't be, it would be F R C managed, and it would be done as an internship.
Well, then in theory, you could charge the F R C and have more.
Yeah, and, and, you know, again, to the credit of the district and, you know, people that, you know, they do, that work for you. Um, you know, it's because we have these self-run programs that we're even able to offset fifty, you know, forty six thousand. And those are the things that are, are adding back to us versus some of the things that we just have to proportionally decide. Everything is valuable, but in proportion, you know, but we have to look at it all juxtaposed against itself, or what's the least damaging?
Well, that's, that's where I was getting to. So if, if that ends up being an F R C program. The amount of food at F R C services revenue could, in theory, increase.
Yeah.
To credit to the district.
Right, but I mean, I'm not looking to terminate a position so that I can get my money off F R C.
No, I'm not getting to that. I'm just trying to think about how we can reallocate.
Yeah, and I look at it, I think the, the staff is a wonderful, amazing individual, um, but the, um. The amount of students served by it, when there's an alternative, the amount of money, it, it's just, you're given that you might have to take some other position. It's a one pointer.
Right.
You have, you might have to take a full F T E for the cost of that, so.
So, like, my, my question is, is not only the program, it's not about limiting the program, is. An educator's gonna be displaced, as well as students are gonna be displaced, as well as the preschool, so it's not just the program itself. Like, it's a, it's real estate, I'm just saying all the different things that snowball from removing the program. That's all I'm trying to remember. Just want to make sure we knew the gravity of removing the program.
All right, let's, uh, close this off, and let's go to, um, update on the green skies, and I don't know, um. Cause I know that you're not feeling quite well, so you don't want to stay more than. Leave us, and we will feel bad.
Before, if you, if you have any other question for me, um, I mean, I can take another five, ten minutes to answer any questions.
Any other questions for, but welcome, yeah, thank you for coming.
Yeah, I think I'm coming back in June to do the financial report for the end of the year.
Yeah, we'll do five, uh, five in-depth, deep dives when we bring it in.
So that would be in basically three months, almost three months from now, so if you have any questions, in the meantime, just reach out to us. And I'll be happy to answer any question, because I don't want to wait three months, you know, to answer any other question. Because that's gonna be a lot of that for three months, so.
Thank you, absolutely, thank you. Okay, Green Sky Solar Project. Yeah, switching gears.
But then you don't pay the lottery. So is this high school? But it's not as expensive, so.
But they don't get anywhere near the number of hours.
So I know, like. Those are like two hour classes versus F R C all day. Basically, the way to a queen.
Say that again.
Like, it's probably two hour classes versus like a five hour class, or three hour class, and then this course.
Yeah, like, they would have maybe a couple of hours, F R C would have much more.
All day, and those, so, I'm just trying to see what kind of families it affects.
All right, um. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda here is the Green Skies, um. So everybody gets, you remember, well, Green Skies, Titan Gen, generally same thing, not same company, but same. Same in terms of, uh, what we've been talking about. Green Skies is a solar company that Titan Gen ended up buying, so just as I'm trying to rewind on history, and you remember that. Around September, we brought, um, Green Skies' presentation to the F F C. F F C, you know, heard it, asked the questions, bumped it to board a bit, um, November seventeenth, we had a discussion about it, and. You know, there was a motion to, uh, have me seek a no obligation, you know, personal. So proposal, first proposal from Titan Gen, um, so we proceeded in order to do that. January twenty fifth, um, brought again Titan Gen to the board, um, they did a full presentation, talked about the results. Behind the meter, front of the meter, the site plans, suggesting timeline, at the time, you know, talked about, you know, what this might look like. Um, you know, how they would, uh, you know, go about an M O U, and that type of thing, and so where we are now. Is that we have proceeded to, um, you know, get the, um. The M O A or M O U or N res to start the process. Um, and, you know, that, that had to be done by a certain timeline, so we could be eligible to even be part of bid process. So at this point, you know, we did do that, um, both, uh, town manager, Brian Foley and I signed it to move it forward. You're not committed to anything yet, uh, but we moved it forward so we could be involved in that bid. Um, so, the option agreement, that was a necessary part. Of letting them know that they had, would have some site control, otherwise they won't even engage with us at all. Because they have to have some site control, and just let the contractor know they would have a right to use the property if we, you know, went with that. Um, and so that's basically where we're at with that. The Green Skies company has submitted the project bids to Eversource, uh, we're waiting to see the results, and. Uh, if our project would be selected, uh, we should know about April fourteenth. Uh, if I hadn't tried to move it forward, we wouldn't have a chance to even try again until after August, so. You know, it's in our best interest to at least see if selected, and this is where it's a little tricky. Um, you know, we would have ten business days to sign the tariff agreement, finalize the licensing. Um, and then we'd have our power purchase agreement, so that would be, I would intend, obviously, to bring those to the board. So if we're selected, I would need to get those to you. Um, now, the fourteenth, you know, we will know on or about. So if you consider ten days, that's still the April twenty sixth, you know, that, that board meeting, I might have to ask you for a special meeting. It could be that it is on that meeting that we can describe it, because we may not know. I might, I doubt that we're gonna know exactly on the fourteenth, it's probably gonna be. Sometime after that, so it's possible that I could bring this to you on the twenty sixth or whatever, but the way these things work, um. It's not like you get first, you know, you, you're gonna have to know about it and then move forward within, within a shorter span of time. So the timeline would be tough. You could say, no way, if you do, we can't reapply again for another year. You know, it's by meter, so the meters that we applied to engage the, to, you know, in this with, we would not be able to apply for yet another year. So that's, that's gonna be the tricky part, uh, but if it is approved, the P P A will be ready. Um, shipping and good one is working with us, Matt Renelli's excellent. Um, he's already, we've already started talking about this P P A, so I could probably put the P P A in front of you before, um, any of this happens. Uh, he has negotiated many of these, so knows what to be asking for, to cut to the chase, and we're in that process right now. As soon as I have a draft P P A with our, our information in it, I'll put it on the dashboard, so you can see it prior to this. Um, occurring, if, if it were to happen. Um, I'm also gonna put the N res up there, but that's basically just saying, we get, you know, we're willing to give them site control if they get this. Um, and so, you know, this, this is a, this is beneficial for us if we were able to move forward with it. We just have to see if we can actually have that option, um, but if we don't take it, we're barred for a year. And do it again for a year. So this is more of an update for you, there's no action right now. Um, the M O U is at the bottom, it's linked, it's called an N res. Um, and so you'll see, basically, there's certain areas that aren't signed, because it's not mine to sign for those parks. But this, this part here, both, um, I signed it, town manager signed it, um, so that we could at least get this moved forward.
And then, once this goes through, then we still get more information before we actually vote, even though it has.
You will, it'll be, uh, and this is available too, you can see it, um, I'll post it to the dashboard, but, um. You will, but it is going to be fast. It's a, it's a fast turnaround. But it's not gonna be different than what you've already seen, I mean, we would have a return. Um. And this is how these things are, really, it's, and Matt Renelli, when I was talking to him, this is important, this stuff. If you want to go solar, this is what you're gonna be doing, and Green Skies is a good company. I still go. And if you wanted to, oh, well, also, a little extra flavor there. The meeting would have to be, will probably be an executive session, because we'd be talking about, uh, contractual. So I would invite Matt Renelli, and you could ask him a bunch of questions. But the next meeting we'd have on this, if we're accepted, would be to look at the P P A, and I would ask Matt Renelli to come, then you'd have an executive session. And you could ask him anything you want. Matt, in talking with him, these are, this is not an uncommon thing right now. He's done, he's done many of these agreements.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a, just a timeline question, um, is it possible, and I think you might have mentioned this, is it possible that it's determined before April fifth? Or, or, or April, what would it have to be, April third, technically, to provide twenty four hours notice? Uh, is it possible that it would be done by then, or no, maybe it would be between the fifth and twenty sixth, those two?
Uh, I apologize if I, if I said on April third, you will not get an answer from these people until, probably on or about April fourteenth.
Gotcha.
And then we would have ten days, so that's why I'm saying on or about. It won't be as early as, I, I don't, I have not been given the reason to believe by anyone, it would be as early as scheduled, or. But.
You didn't, by the way, I'm just.
No, no, I, I could have prepared, but, but it's, uh, yeah, this, this, the most poignant and most difficult part about it is that it's a fast kind of turnaround. Once it's, once we receive it, once we get the deal, so to speak, and we are going to need to. You know, get that P P A signed. Now, the good, I mean, it is good news that Matt's very experienced with this, he's done this many times, Green Sky is a good company, he knows what he's doing. So the P P A, we have the advantage of a guy who's written a lot of P P As and knows how to cut through the stuff. Um, and you can ask him whatever you want, you know, he'll be happy to discuss it. I felt good about this, I wouldn't have gone this far if I didn't feel good about this, because we did go through quite a process to get here. So I am, I'm convinced this would have a benefit to your district, and I'm also convinced that Green Skies is, is a good company to work with. So otherwise, I would have bailed on this, not even gone this far. You got, you're in a, you're in a decent position here, if, if we're able to move this forward. But we had to do a lot of stuff really fast to get here, so we're in a good place, it's just, I don't know what the. When the next, when that comes, I'm gonna have to reach out to y'all and say, you know, we got this timeline, we gotta come back together. April could be a busy month.
Yep, I'm just gonna throw it out there, we do have F F C on April nineteenth, so I don't know, since four of us probably already have that on our calendar. Perhaps we could do an executive session right after, if, if it ends up falling that we can't wait until the April twenty sixth.
Yeah, we mean, I have to.
What's that?
Did you say April fifth?
We have a meeting April nineteenth, but we can't wait until April twenty sixth.
Right.
Timeline question, Doctor Will, is it ten business days or ten calendar days?
Ten business days.
Business days?
Yeah, it's a little more.
Okay. I think it's to the twenty sixth, but not a whole lot of room.
And what else, anyone else? Yeah, okay, let's move on to the A A S.
All right, um, so this is just to let you know.
Yay.
Uh, they gave you this kind of what I've played on. This is, you know, to notify people if you wanted to do a press release or something, but. Basically, it just lets you know that, you know, the program's been completed successfully. So you may recall that we invested in this program, that I would be doing it over a two, whatever, two, three year period. And so I completed that program. I have the national certification. And, you know, and this is their letter to, to let you know. Many months, you know, actually, I listened to years. You know, I'm not, I don't wanna try to look like I'm tooting my horn here, but. Stay building and managing, you know, some of these things that they talk about, if yes, I'm doing already. But that, uh, it was a good program. There was a lot learned, a lot of people interacted with superintendents across the United States. A lot of work that, you know, we did a lot of work. We did a capstone project.
How do you find the time? Serious.
It was difficult to find the time. It was, it was a lot of work, but.
So what do you walk away with? Well, one thing that.
You know, what, what it's like in other areas of the country. New England is far in advance in a lot of places. New England, yeah, education in New England is very good compared to education in a lot of other places in the country. You know. That would be the number one thing is just recognizing, uh, that piece and, and we're fortunate. We've got a lot of great stuff going on in England. I've recognized that some of the things that people use for data in other areas of the country are, are kind of interesting. You know, they'll claim success on certain things, but, um. You know, to me, the, the, the data is very, very adult. The requirements in other areas of the country are not quite as, um. You know, um. Not as quite, quite as strong as they are here. So we have, we are expected to do a lot here that, that not necessarily, not a lot of other states are expecting of their, their education system. So, you know, I suppose that's why, you know, you've got some great systems going on, but you also have a lot of things were required to do that some of these other places are not. So that was interesting. And in some places, superintendents are elected. They're elected officially. Want to try it out?
Yeah, it's fine. We'll get you a sign.
So that it's an interesting to see across the country how it's done. You know, but it was good.
I mean, you must have had a really a blast, a whole room full of superintendents.
It's probably a session like, who's at the best board of education stories?
There were, there were sessions, so. No, it was, uh, I think, you know, the, the budgeting sessions are really good to people, but, um. I'm sorry, your question was specifically.
Parents here, we're gonna congratulate you.
I did, I mean, you know, I was at a slight disadvantage because I had to do some of this because I caught COVID. I missed one, you know, I missed some of the, the early, early version, the early ones at the beginning of the twenty months. Were virtual. Then they went, you know, a person, but I.
That's right, because you were supposed to go.
And I missed one or, or, you know, other thing happened, but, um, I did get to go to this, this one in person.
So back to the answering her question.
No, it's starting to sound like did, did it?
No, I, you know, we're not lifelong.
You never know.
You only have a little bit together, um, and, you know, a lot of elephants, but we're, we're. It was good. Actually, did I got, yeah, it was from friends and Nick Lemens is a great person, great guy. He was, uh, you know, he was by a science, but, you know, mentor. And he's a good guy and he was, I have a long, he's, we've established relationship that will continue for a long time. And a lot of the other ones too, but, um. I think overall, you know, it's just, it did increase my capacity and abilities, so it's good. You know, a lot of great stuff I can bring back to us, um, for ideas about some things we can do that I'm gonna be working into future agendas, which each is subcommittees. There's some really great stuff I think we could do here that I saw in other places. But, um, but you have a great system. I mean, compared to other places in the country, we're very fortunate about, you know, what happens here. And it is harder for some, from our, your, your workers because. There's a lot of mandates here that actually also don't exist in other places, so I mean, it's, it's just an interesting thing. To see and to see the differences.
I just wanna say, just because we're fortunate in this area of the country, doesn't mean that we've still not done a fight for it, but it. I want anyone to say, oh, and Dr. Will it says, we're so fortunate.
I think he also said we're expected to do so much as well, so.
You know, your education systems do put a lot of people in a lot of good schools and a lot of, you know, that's what's going on.
And in order to perpetuate that, we need to be properly funded.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are places that are so bad that people can't even send their kids to public schools and they have to figure out how to. Spend money on Catholic schools or private schools because their public school system is just.
Yeah, yeah. So I have a lot of great things I can bring back to us and I'll do so over the next coming year. And, uh, you know, I did make a lot of connections. Must be that way. Very, very useful and it, it was great to be able to get that certification, so that's nice too. It was a very good program.
Perfect. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
You passed the test.
Now you know how those SAT speakers still felt today.
Yeah, well, it wasn't, we had to watch all of, all of each other's capstone videos once.
So when do we, when does your board get to see yours?
Uh-oh, you shouldn't.
I mean, you could see it, and it, it, you know, mine is, they, I follow the rules. You're, you're supposed to do like a. Two minute, you know, like a.
Oh, oh, there was a time limit.
There was.
And we were under the time limit?
Listen, we all got it. You should see how some of these others did. I'm a rookie in the talking. Yeah, maybe more like eighteen minutes, somebody did forty-eight minutes. It was like two minutes.
You actually made it into, no. Well, then you're gonna have to put that on the dashboard. We have to watch this.
We have two minutes fifteen seconds for it.
This would be the first.
How fast was your cadence? That's.
You know, and it was really, the, the work you did during the sessions was most of it. The capstone was a flashy little thing at the end, you know, but the, the work that was part of the sessions was really good stuff.
So you will be sharing that one? When you're bored to see that goes for two minutes? I gotta have to say, I'm impressed. See, that timer maybe came in handy. Oh, worry. Okay, any other ones? Okay. Oh, June fourteenth, uh, TMS Ocean Ceremony, that we, we're just gonna say that we did as we. Did in the past is that to the same night that we will meet here at eight o'clock. So that everyone has time to partake in the ceremony and then get back here in time. It was a little late because I went to my coffee, but, um, we're gonna do the same thing that we did. Sure. I think it worked out well.
Yeah, you, you'll be able to get out, so you're still gonna get up here free.
No, I think that worked out well, though, because at least you had a little time to just, uh. Get everyone situated and back here and then.
I think we should order a pizza. Yes, I'm gonna say that right here.
Meals are voting today on WFSB.
You got a delivery here.
It depends on that. Every single one of you vote for meals on the WFSB. That I could, uh, you know.
I want my tacos. Where are those tacos?
Which is the THS graduation?
Well, that was the, I saw that right before all of the snow days, which when, this is the next precursor for our conversation of the hundred and eighty day conversation. Because that was already thick, like what, a week before I saw something on social media? Where's my calendar?
It's six, four, two months. When's the high school graduation?
The fifteenth.
Okay, I suppose the fifteenth, the Ocean's.
The fourteen.
So TMS is the fourteenth.
Last day of school is fifteenth, if. We do the hundred and eighty days. Otherwise, we're pushing it into the nineteenth and, you know.
What do we have, a hundred and eighty-two on the calendar?
Yeah, the TE, I talked to the TEA, they're the other piece that have to be willing, they're willing.
So June fifteenth is how many days, you said, though?
June fifteenth puts us at the hundred and eighty.
Eight hundred.
If we go for the.
Well, right now, right now, you're, you're to nineteen, but if you do do, yes, if you go back to hundred and eighty, you're at the fifteen.
Because what the conversation is for this I six. Of the hundred and eighty day combo, if we wanna end on actual the graduation day or we. Going to the nineteenth, but not Monday.
Speaking as a recent grad, uh. If. My personal opinion is we avoid that Monday, the nineteenth. No, but I'm just. This is my opinion. Alright, it's up. Thank you.
All I heard was no.
No. You're about right.
Um, anyone wants to, we could do, um, a motion, a board action of doing this, but we wanted to see what everyone thought about a hundred and eighty day because. You know, I know they tried to get the graduation date out there and of course with March, we of course had to have snow after they selected it and I thought to myself, I saw that, I said, we're gonna get snow. It was just too soon, too soon.
The snow, rain, phantom snow.
How much money do we save by not going to school those two or three days? Buses and.
Well, because you do the normal number of days anyway, you don't really save on snow days i- if you bump out. You may save a little going from one eighty to, you know, one eighty to one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, how much is for the.
If you do that, but it's not a ton because you have to, you still have to pay people. You can't deprive them of very.
I mean, I'll be honest, there's no kids that are gonna be coming back after they graduate, like that's especially the nineteen, but you said that Monday, like, people are already gone.
Well, I think the seniors wouldn't have to come in on the sixteenth. I think they're done, so it would really just be. Everybody else.
But then you're still having the, the.
And the eighth graders, I think.
The eighth graders on the fourteenth have their ceremony.
I'm all for the fifteenth to end the last six.
You don't have to ask me twice.
But I mean, it is a conversation to be had.
Yeah.
You know, so, and I will, if somebody would like to, I will certainly entertain a motion to move I six down to L one.
Motion to move I six down to L one.
Second. Any comments?
Do you have a end of that by?
I had a discussion. Just, just to be clear, and the reason why we're having the conversation is because the dates went out after or before snow days, okay? All right. I was just gonna say, because usually that would be.
It would be totally.
Fairly normal, like, it's not, not crazy, okay?
Well, they made that new rule in twenty.
Yeah, we can.
Twenty, where we can technically graduate or we can have graduation whenever we want.
You didn't used to be able to graduate for your hundred and eighty days. Now we can. So we were able to call that date sooner, plus some people really wanted us to call that date, so we wanted to make sure we did it.
Yeah.
And the seniors, whether they come back or not, all the, it won't be a, it won't be a problem with the state. So like even if you said, no, I want the hundred and eighty-two days, we'd still do the graduation on the fifteenth.
I know.
And this will be empty. A lot of all kids, especially in Monday of the seniors. Maybe people will come on Friday, so like, no one's coming back.
Just pitch a team, a weekend and then go for your school the workday.
I mean. Just finish my comment, like, normally I'm not a fan of like cutting days unless we're like running up against July, you know? But, I mean, this is kind of a unique circumstance. I mean, maybe. Just for the future, I know there's always pressure to get a graduation date, but maybe we want a little bit.
Wait a little bit.
So we don't, yeah, because it, well, it, it happens, so. And that's not the, this happened in recent memory too, you know, we've had storms and, but.
But this vote is in order to move it to L one.
Yeah. But that is my discussion.
Okay, so going to move it to L one and we had a discussion, so let's go ahead and do the vote for Lisa, so go ahead, you can start voting.
Hi.
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 I'm a I as well, just to make sure that she. Got it, because I know the recording's all weird. Okay, so we will be voting on this for L one. And have more conversation on there. Okay, so curriculum and liaison, uh, reports. I know that the policy meet today, policy had a meeting, curriculum had a meeting. The communications may in between for two. No, okay.
I don't think so.
We, no, it didn't. But policy still doesn't have the minutes in from September or something. Jen sent like five emails already and we got one from the court clerk. Court clerk, because I'm sitting next to you. Just thinking, court clerk, I'm right here, um. The town clerk sent the email too, that we do not have those on file, so that is going to be an issue. So we do need those in, but if you met, I don't know if you want to. Have an update?
We did meet. I mean, I, I like told me to give the updates, you know, he's the chair, but we did discuss, um. We had a discussion regarding the LGBTQ. Policy and forgive me if I left off some of the initials. But we discussed the policy, um, and the regulations that are being implemented or putting together to be put in the school system. And we talked about another one that was a little bit.
More clerical updates.
Yeah, I don't, uh, what was it? Um, wow, that was just a few hours ago.
Student activities.
Two minutes, two neckties, yes.
Yeah, it was more of like, it was still. Changing verbiage to make it more up to date versus changing policy.
Yeah, we just, yeah, Dr. Will had added.
Some strikeouts. Very interesting. That was scary. That was freaking me.
So now to clarify this.
Yeah.
So it's your problem.
Um, but I did mention that, um, we did have a conversation about, um, the fact that at one point there were, there was one, right, when you use dogs. That detect the bombs. Um, and it's within the realm of the search and seizure policy, within what. Scope of the policy that the superintendent can make decisions to use. Um, that kind of a resource, sort of, search dogs. And so, um.
My apologies for doing the red alert.
Oh, no, you weren't, you weren't, I'm just. But she, you know, to your point, you know, there's a lot of great stuff to talk about there with policy. So that was mentioned and, um, discussed, the superintendent has the authority to have dogs come in. So I did mention at some point, you were probably gonna, as we could progress in the process. You know, we may have them coming for drugs, you know. Kind of, uh, situation, you know, to search and drugs. Pretty cool, but it wouldn't be searching individual kids. It would be a, like, it would be a secure building and then you bring the dogs in, they walk around the hallways and then they leave. So like in a high school eighty-four minute period, that would happen within twenty to forty minutes, the kids would be in that class setting. It would just be for the purpose of detecting anything in the lot. The dogs no longer really sniff for stuff like CBD either, it's the heavier stuff and that's spoken to. Kids are, uh, some, the, just to real quick, the dark web and things like that, the Tor browser, kids are able to order stuff and have them sent to their homes through the postal service. So there's, there's stuff that, that is happening that never happened before when we were kids. So, you know, it, it may be less to once, you know, twice a year, just have, you know, uh, search dogs and they're not the big canines, they're the huge looking.
It wasn't.
They're not, they're not ominous, they're not terrible looking, would never. It's not like we'd even, we wouldn't go into lunch, we'd search children, it wouldn't be that, it would be a secure building while everyone's in class, they stay in class, still learning. And then that would be twice a year, not announced, so people would not bring it in. Because they would never know. Isn't T just empty of us? So, um, but it could be both, but right now, my focus would be T, THS. But anyway, search and seizure came up, that conversation, sorry.
I shouldn't have used the four letter word that I used.
Oh, no, you were good. I just, I don't want it to, I wanted to give you the context so people don't think that there's an imminent. Bomb situation or anything like that.
Would the, the dogs be on a troop? Day?
Uh, troop C would, we'd organize it with the resident troop commander and troop C, but they bring the dogs from, the canine units are different.
I was just gonna say that they would bring a, um, one of the dogs to the spring print link here. I was just gonna say that they would bring a um, one of the dogs to the Springfield playing yearly, so that one is a very, very nice, friendly.
Yeah, the dogs.
Not very, very smart, but very, very nice dog.
And yeah, they, they're cute, they're not ominous looking, but they will. Send the lockers and if they find something under reasonable cause, we can move it to lock.
Oh, it's perfect. So there's one more thing, because Tony won't be back, so I agree that our chair should be reporting, but P flag came to our meeting. And uh, is this on the dashboard? Cause I know it's in the Google thing for um. Policy committee, but there's a P flags, uh, transgender day of visibility pizza social on March thirty first from six to seven thirty in um, Nance Field.
Yeah, that was made reference to, so I pulled it and put it into the policy folder.
So it's available to everybody in the policy folder, and I think it's available at this school, right?
Yeah, well, that, that, that was just brought up today, just mentioned, so uh, and, and uh, Mr. Holt said he wanted to see it, I think you guys did too.
Yeah.
So that just came up, just in the email and I just threw it in the, the policy folder. So that would, uh, so yeah, and then we'll share with the community.
Don't bring it on that.
Frickin' right, curriculum. So I think we got a productive meeting. We talked about two big items, um, number one. If, or members remember back in September or August, we had a general update about legislative changes that were coming down the pipe. Um, one of them had to deal with new model curriculum requirements, which covered, I think there's close to a dozen different topics. But it made anything S E L, personal finance, Native American studies, some of these are things that the district already does, others are unclear. Um, so we had a discussion about when those changes come into effect, um, and what the impact the district is going to be. Um, unfortunately, the statute is very vague and for many of these things, we don't have a whole lot of information at the moment. Uh, the state's supposed to up this model curriculum by um, January thirty first, October twenty four, is that correct?
Uh, again, it goes twenty, yeah, it's January first, twenty twenty four is when they have to complete it for the state, yes. And then, so at that point, and perhaps sooner, cause that's the deadline, uh, when they're gonna start doing it, you know? When these resources become available, we can have more in-depth conversations about how this will affect the district and um, how we best can implement this to our curriculum.
So that was one item. The other item we is uh, about unstructured time. Um, and how to encourage, you know, unstructured playtime with uh, kids, particularly younger kids, topic that's come up a bit, mental health committee. It also talked about it in a full board discussion, um, so it's kind of a, a general brainstorming session that we had. Dr. Bill had a, had an interesting idea, which I think Jayden and I both liked, which would be to try to uh, do kind of a tri department effort. Between the schools, human services, and rec departments, try to get licensed by group events for kids. Um, maybe like a, like a, a lock-in, not a lockdown, a lock-in. Your kids can have a, you know, like a big sleepover up at the schools or, or do something that utilizes some of our resources to try to encourage some good. Um, no screen time, um, socialization for kids to get together, uh, which I think would be, be great, especially on fields of the pandemic. A lot of kids are struggling to socialize, um, and you know, we have a lot of general problems with technology as well, especially younger kids, so. Very fruitful conversation, um, we want to kind of find two of those ideas fit and um, talk to the other parties and see if we can, we can work something out, so. That, I think it was a great meeting, but stay tuned.
Awesome.
Yeah.
No, that sounds like a great.
PTO would maybe help you with that. The lock-in. That's right.
With the board of education, the team of services and rec and host and creative and camping nights, things that just got people out. Get them out and you know, out of hand about how to, you know? Just to getting, putting the devices down, spending the time, you know, together.
Okay, um, PTO, yeah, I'm not gonna go through all the updates, I'll just go through those one, but if you wanna get plugged. I volunteered at the T I S book fair yesterday, it's fantastic. I saw a third grade, a fourth grade, and a fifth grade class, it's so fun to see that even the fifth graders are so excited to have the book fair back. Kids are walking by, looking through the windows, um, lots of great books, I mean, just. E- everything that looked like it used to creep in, I don't think it's all, just, it's all back, um, I think they had hours tonight for parents to phone in by and then the kids come in and start doing their first. T I S says it where like they come in for reviewing and then they come in a later date for purchasing. Um, so it was, it was fantastic, the wonderful librarian, Mrs. Hill was, was helping students for book fair and also running classes um, at the same time. And um, I missed one other point and I wanted to touch on, oh, the, I'll just give a quick shout out, the book fair, longtime book fair chairs, Alicia Bishop and Beth Garrett are leaving. This will be their last book fair, um, it's being taken over thankfully by um, Jamie Gagel and Chloe Coles and they are also taking, this is a big year for PTO. It's a blip that likes to happen in the years where they're like losing all of their chairs, cause people age out, you know, their kids age out, so they're losing a lot of chairs and a lot of board members. So if anybody wants to volunteer, watch this recording later, please reach out to the PTOs. Um, but they already have two women who have volunteered to do the two book fairs at Birch Grove and the two book fairs at T I S going forward, so it's fantastic.
Lot of rolling.
So big thanks to that and Elise who have done a wonderful job for years.
Yeah, book fair is always fun, the kids get so excited to break down what they have on the list and then of course you open up the pencils and all the other little. Diaries and things, and of course, that's just where the money wants to go.
Huge fundraiser and um, actually the, the book fair has the opportunity to um. We, we either profits in dollars or in offer books through Scholastic and the smart boards that were originally bought. For Birch Grove and T I S all came from offer books, um, profit from book fairs, so yeah.
The teachers always have their little folders too, to get books and I think that that's always good to help the classrooms as well.
Kids love buying books for the teacher stuff.
Oh, they do.
Great, great fundraiser, great support.
Okay, okay. See, I, you know, have a report today, just a lot of stuff going on with a bunch of concerns, so stay tuned for four thirty tomorrow, yeah. Arpa, stay tuned, um, I guess that, like, just make sure that everyone does have the, what do we say, the fifth? And also, um. Put that nineteenth, just in case we need that for the solar, just make sure you guys are adding that to your calendar, because the budget. I, I do have the, that the budget is going to be finalized on the twenty ninth. So just make sure we have all that and also to mention tomorrow are the T M S rounds.
Yep, so instructional rounds are tomorrow, uh, there's a reminder, um, and a submission form if you wanted to participate. Uh, we're gonna be starting at eight twenty-five at T M S and, and doing the rounds on wit and wisdom. This'll be the third rounds, but a year out of the four, the last, the last one will be at the high school. Uh, you're welcome to attend, I put a kind of, uh, please respond by eight AM this morning, if you wanted to, just so we have. You know, we know how many material packets to make and things like that, but if you wanna, if you wanna come, just tell me, text me and I'll, I'll make sure tomorrow you have, you know, I'll make an extra coffee or whatever. Um, so do that for you right now, we've got two of you, um, and you're all, you know, as many are welcome, cause that, that's the whole purpose, is to get you all into the school. So let me know, um, but then that last one's.
Choice left box and bag.
Well, if you do, you're not gonna get a pass.
Okay, let's go ahead and um, do you have a motion written up for the hundred and eighty day that you wanna just pop on the screen? I guess, you know, just how, could just make it, you know?
Yeah, just.
You have a little back, stick backs on there.
Sure.
Um, essentially, we're just uh, about to go, the hundred and eighty days ending on June fifteenth.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put necessarily the date specifically, it's something weird, but just that you, you, you know, the motion to reduce the school, you know, student school year from a hundred and eighty-two to a hundred and eighty. You know, or to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And that was. Motion to reduce the school, student school year from a hundred and eighty-two to a hundred and eighty days for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Well, thank you for doing that, however, you cannot make a motion, so.
Write it down, but if you say, yeah, like he said.
So moved, so moved.
Then just.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, any further discussion? Would you like to add any other comments? Okay, everyone else is good, I mean, I think we're okay if we just go ahead and say, you know, all those in favor could say aye.
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 Okay, I think that was majority, that was everybody, so everyone's saying yes, so therefore we would be um, closing this out, you're out with a hundred and eighty days. So at this point, uh, we will open up the public participation, if anyone online would like to speak, please, and, and you will be given a two minute timer, just post your name and your address for the record. Okay, we have, um. Mary, hold on a second, let's shift the timer up.
Lost that, okay, yeah, we did, it's behind Jacob.
She comes, your head is too big to see the time.
Now it's lost.
It's all the way down the corner, there you go.
Just click the enlarge.
Yeah, you got it right there.
Oh?
This wasn't part of the certification program.
You're going back to training.
Alright.
Okay, okay, um, so we did have uh, Mary Rose, if you could please state your name and address for the record and you'll be given two minutes.
Thank you, everyone, um, Mary Rose DeBarryck, she/her, thirty-seven, Ryan Road. Just wanted to say, it's actually nice to hear you guys um, having a little bit of fun, uh, while working hard at the same time. Um, I just wanna make a, a passion plea of what I said the other night at town council, is that when you um, have finally, when the budget has finally been determined. If you could use your influence and your social circles to promote um, a vote and not just to have people vote. But encourage people to vote yes, um, you're elected uh, to help guide our community. Um, as noted many times, not a lot of people are really truly paying attention. I, I would imagine you spend upward of a hundred hours individually um, in budget discussions, so you really know, you know what it takes. To run our school system and I know many of you, um, were hoping it would be more and, and as a per- personally, I would have supported that as well, but. Um, the other night at town council, someone said, um, there's an average of seven hundred people that vote no every year, no matter what. So we're already starting with seven hundred people voting no, uh, for whatever their reasons and unfortunately. Um, maybe a lot of those people are informed, but um, based on my experience and the times that I've participated, I don't see a lot of folks um, at meetings, so. Since you know what it takes to run the schools and operate, please encourage people to vote yes, you have influence, um, people, you are respected. Um, please encourage people, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move to Colleen.
You have to maybe unmute her. I got it, thank you, Ashley, um, good evening, Board of Ed members, I'm calling you to check twelve, Blueberry Hill, Tallinn, Connecticut. Um, first, I just wanna say, um, appreciate all the hard work that you guys do and sometimes. Doesn't always get recognized, so I do appreciate that, but I was really want just to make a clarification. Um, regarding the APA, we do vote in our votes, obviously, everybody will know, but if it does go through, it still has another process to go to the town council. For them to review and take a final vote on, so it's a two-step um, voting process, so. Um, if it passes tomorrow, I have no idea, obviously, if it passes, hopefully it'll be on Tuesday's agenda, so just keep that um, on the back of your minds for tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you, Valine, um, I think that is important, that, so thank you. Let's go to Mark. Maybe needs to be.
Mark, you need to unmute. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, uh, Mark Reese Beck at forty-one Cortland Drive in Tallinn and I second uh, the other participants' feedback, great job here. All the hard work you guys put into this, definitely doesn't get appreciated. Um, couple of things that I noticed, the health insurance is a large percentage of the budget, I know there's a lot of discussion on that tonight. Um, and I understand there's some cost sharing associated with the town, but I haven't seen any breakdown of that cost sharing between the town and the Board of Education. Um, is there any documentation on how that uh, is broken down since that's such a large portion of the budget? And I know the town's got a five percent increase, Board of Ed's got three, I'm really not happy with that breakdown, but I'd love to see some more money come to the Board of Ed. Um, just wanted to know if there's any more um, uh, visibility and transparency around that.
You can uh, speak for the whole um, two minutes and then we, it's not like a back and forth dialogue, we go on a points of information if um, anyone wants to speak to that. But at this point, do you have any other points?
Um, I guess that was it, that was it, and the nine million dollars unassigned funds for the town. Um, I noticed they're gonna use some of that this year, it started in two thousand eleven with about a six million dollar. Uh, uh, um, budget amount and it's now, you know, over nine million, just wondering, um, if, if somehow we can petition the town to leverage some of those funds to. Save some of these positions, I know it needs to be between ten and fifteen percent, you know, from a, uh, from a rating perspective, but I think we're gonna be around fourteen percent. So seems to me there's a little bit of, some funds there that could use, be used to preserve some of these um, uh, positions.
Thank you for that, um, Dr. Will, do you wanna speak to that? That was the insurance piece, the cost sharing of that picture.
Yeah, so, we said about what the.
Yeah, with the more breakdown and more transparency, which I guess is ultimately what um, Katie was saying the other day.
Yeah, right now, um, it's ninety-one percent or nine percent. Now, um, that, that's what it's been established to be, uh, any change in that would have to be, you know, to discuss with the town.
Just time any other board members?
I think you had another question here, but I think that would be, I think your question about um, general fund would be best opposed to the town council.
Correct.
Yes, was there another question you had?
No, I think it was the um, the unassigned fund balance for the fourteen percent and something of, I just took a couple of quick notes, the cost sharing. And that was something else.
I will just comment as far as the unassigned fund balance, just in my discussion with um, Lisa Hancock, they will not use that fund balance for recurring expenses. So any of these staff positions are all recurring, so um. Just to let you know that that is kind of where they see it, but you might wanna reach out to Lisa Hancock at the town, she might be able to give you a little bit more. Information as far as why, and, and I know that they're very, very determined to keep, to keep it on the higher end of the percentage because of our triple A bond rating. So that, they're rationalization, but that's, that's my understanding, but you may wanna reach out for further clarification to Lisa.
That's perfect, any other board members have anything that they would like to say, cause if not, I will.
Thanks to everyone who's been advocating for public schools in town, that's all. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will end at nine forty. Thank you all very much.